It is now still seven o'clock, 7:01, and I will call the meeting order. Please join me for the pledge.
Pledge of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion by Councilmember Mack. A second, and a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, community comment for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Trying to scan the room, I don't see anybody. Is there anybody on the Zoom? It does not look like it. Is anybody here for community comment? All right, then let's move on to presentations and reports. Service recognition for Councilmember Glenn Henry. Well Glenn, we have some special members joining us here tonight. But before we get into that, I just wanted to kind of set this up. As many of us know, tonight, after serving 12 years on the Carver City Council, tonight is Glenn's last city council meeting. From here forward, he will be spending Monday, the first and third Monday of the night, likely smoking a cigar, going to a hockey game, or hunting. Or maybe all three in the same evening.
Probably all three.
Glenn has been part of the city council for as long as I have lived in Carver. And your impact Glenn, the stuff that you've seen, the events that you have taken part in, have changed what Carver looks like. We certainly didn't look like what we looked like, what our community looked like 12 years ago. And at the end of the day, even when we didn't agree Glenn, I knew that you always had the city's best interests in mind, even if we saw things from a different perspective. So with that, I thank you, but I know we have some other folks who want to roast. I mean, say good things. So it appears that we have somebody on the Zoom who refers to himself as Mike Brent's hero Webb. Mr. Webb, would you like to have the floor?
For the record, I would have had this meeting start right on time.
Were you aware that we had technical difficulties and that there wasn't anything I could do about it?
Blah, 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 blah. Glennie Henry, gangster. I wish I could be there. I wish I could be there in person to let you know what an amazing individual you've been for... Almost spit out my gum, for this city. You know, you ran for council and you lost. And you did one of the most stand-up things I've ever witnessed. You came to my house and you said, "Why won't you support me?" And we ended up having about a two and a half hour long call. And that was before you got me hooked on cigars. And we worked through a bunch of stuff. And the next thing I know, you ran for city council and won. And you are an incredible partner for me. And the things that you've done for that city. Now, I'm not saying we always agreed that you were always borderline rational. But what I am saying is that you were super, super open-minded and you always, you always listened before you yapped. And that's one of the best skills that a council member can have. And you made me a better council member. I think you made the city a much better city. And I'll tell you what, if the people on this council had half the heart that you have for council, the city's in really, really good hands. You should be really proud of the things that you accomplished and the friendships that you've gained and the things that you did within this city. You should be really proud that Heidi's still with you. Just seeing if anybody's listening.
She's not here tonight, Mike.
Well, less than better. Glennie, I value your friendship. I value your wisdom. And you will always be an incredible member of my family. And I love you for it, brother.
All right.
Thanks, Mike.
And I would have started the meeting on time.
We miss you, Mike.
Missing you, Mike.
Mr. Weigand, you served with Glenn. Would you like to come up and say a few things? Do you mind coming up so that our tens and tens of people who are watching this online can hear you?
Hundreds.
You were, you were lucky because I had Mike sitting next to me for 10 years.
I miss you, Jim Boy.
I kind of feel like Mike. Glenn and I seldom agreed on anything. But I, I felt he always had the city's best interest in mind. And I always listened to what he said and then ignored it. But unlike Heidi, I probably voted for him this time. Yeah, I think the city will miss you, Glenn. And like I said, I did vote for you.
Well, I appreciate that, Jim.
And I think it's probably true. We seldom agreed on anything.
Well, we always had, we always had best interest of Carver at heart. And we always worked through any differences we had. And it's okay to agree to disagree, Jim, just as long as it's civil. And that's the way I've always looked at this council.
So I'll miss you on the council.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you.
All right, council, I hate to put you guys on the spot, but you also say good things about Glenn.
Moving on.
Nobody? Okay.
Oh, no. We can't leave it hanging on that one.
Joy was getting ready.
Okay, go ahead, Joy.
Glenn, I so appreciate the time that we have been overlapped on the council together. You bring a different perspective of part of Carver that I didn't have. And I so have appreciated all of your perspectives throughout my time on council and the history that you bring as well, because you've lived here, I think, longer than I have in Carver. And yeah, and appreciate all your contributions to the council.
Thank you.
Likewise, I, you're always a good listener, so, and I really appreciated that. And just good collaboration. So we can always talk things through when we think we might not disagree. A lot of times we find out, oh, we do. We're just looking at it from different perspectives. So gonna miss you. I definitely have a kind of similar journey as Councilmember McKnight as far as some overlap initially with community or planning commission. So I've enjoyed getting to know you and gonna probably watch a little more hockey now.
I don't know what just happened. Oh, there's a doggy. Okay, so anyways, on Glenn. Quickly, Kristi. All right, let's keep moving.
Oh, Glenn, I am gonna miss you on council. You've been chair buddies with me for many years now. So I guess I'll just have to, you know, elbow you now when I see you in the street. It's been nice, Glenn. And, you know, we both kind of live here in the old town. So it's nice to have another viewpoint from that that's always been in the council, too. So thanks for your time and thanks for everything you've done for us.
Thank you, Kristi.
All right, with that, Glenn, we have the key to the city to award you and to take a picture. Congratulations, we appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
Should we do a quick picture?
All of us?
Yes. Would it make sense if we stayed up here? We have a lot more opportunities.
I'd have had to Glennie.
Hey, Webby, I got a key.
I didn't get a key!
All right, let's give Glenn one more round of applause. All right, next up on the agenda is the Greg Osterdike Community Service Award. So Sid and Lori, you guys want to come on up? So the Greg Osterdike Community Service Award is named after Greg, who was the former mayor of Carver. Shortly after Greg's death in 2019, we started thinking about the way that we could honor his memory that was in line with the many contributions to the city of Carver and our larger community. The decision was then made to rename the Community Service Award after Greg, which I think is the perfect way to honor Greg's memory. Community service was a very important part of what, who Greg was. Greg was the mayor of the city of Carver from 2011 to 2014. He was also a lion. He served on the foundation, at the Saints Foundation at St. Francis Hospital, and was very involved with Garden Angels Catholic Church and so much more. The city of Carver is a better place because of Greg's many, many contributions. The winner of the 2022 Greg Osterdike Community Service Award is a tremendous representation of Greg's outstanding selfless service to our community. It is now my pleasure to hand this off to Lori and Sid, Greg's wife and daughter, who will tell you more about the winner of the 2022 Community, Greg Osterdike Community Service Award.
The winner of the 2022 Greg Osterdike Community Service Award is the Carver Fire Relief Association. The Relief Association's effort to coordinate and host a fundraising event which shared the proceeds of the families of retired fighters who tragically passed away last year is just a shining example of their commitment to serve those who have served. In addition, the number of hours given to put on the annual fire department open house event is a testament of the Relief Association's mission to serve and support our community.
I would like to share just a quick personal story that happened with our family. In the middle of Greg's cancer battle one night, he got up to go to the bathroom and fell on his way back to bed. After several attempts to get him up by myself, I had to call 911. I had requested assistance with a fall, explaining to them that he was weak and I was not able to do it on my own. Since it was around about 2:00 in the morning, I also requested, if possible, that they not come into the neighborhood with full lights and sirens. I didn't want to wake up the neighborhood and be the topic of the community Facebook page with "Does anybody know what's going on?" subject. What seemed like only five seconds after I hung up the phone, I had one neighbor that lived just a few doors down, who volunteers his time with Carver Fire, coming into my front door, asking, "What's going on Lori and where is Greg?" He sat with Greg, talking to him, asking what had happened and how he was feeling. Shortly after, the chief and several others were there to help in any way they needed to. They were able to get Greg up and he was transported to Abbott to get checked out by his doctors. I think of that night often for a couple of reasons. First, without the quick assistance that we received, I wasn't sure how things were going to turn out. I knew we were in good hands and my anxiety calmed once they arrived. And second, when living in a town such as Carver, we tend to know the people that volunteer their time to help others in need in a blink of an eye. They are friends, they are neighbors, and they are considered family. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts. For that, we all appreciate all that the Carver Fire Relief does for our tight-knit community of Carver.
The time, support, service, and dedication of the Carver Fire Relief Association has unselfishly given to our community exemplifies a tremendous level of service to our community. With that, we are proud to give the 2022 Greg Osterdike Community Service Award to the Carver Fire Relief Association. Congratulations and thank you so, so much for everything that you do for our community. My dad would be so extremely proud.
All right, you're gonna have your work cut out for you with this picture, so.
You guys certainly don't look like caddies. I'll go back behind that way. Why didn't we just turn the elevator picture that way?
Lori, you're getting it every year. All right, up next is the Employee of the Year Awards. Each year we do two Employee of the Year Awards, one for a full-time employee and one for a part-time employee. So this year for the full-time employee, it is my pleasure to honor Eric Madigan. And this is a really special award because it isn't something that we have anything to do with. This is something that the nominations are received from everyone's peers. So it's truly who their colleagues think are deserving of this award. So with that, here's what Eric's colleagues had to say about him. Eric always seems to have a welcoming sense of positivity at work. His willingness to always lend a helping hand displays what a great team player Eric is. I've worked with Eric a handful of times and I always appreciate his willingness to help, his dedication to getting the task done, his professionalism, and his overall team player attitude. Eric has a can-do and positive attitude. He moves things forward, wants to problem-solve, involves others, appreciates the work of others, and takes pride in his work. So with that, congratulations, Eric. Eric, he really is excited about Carver recognition and being here tonight. All right, and then our part-time, although it feels so weird to call you guys part-time because we know how much you give to our community. But the winner for the part-time category is Chief Tim Walsh. And from your nomination, Tim, folks said of you that you always go the extra mile. Tim is professional, always in a great mood. He brings positive energy to the room and communicates well with others. And then he does an incredible amount of work for the department. And it's amazing to think it's still part-time. So with that, congratulations, Tim. All right, moving on, we don't have any public hearings this evening. Glenn, you wanted to remove 7.6, right?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda pulling item 7.6, the approve a purchase of a tanker truck for $25,000 from the city of Waconia.
Got it. A motion by Councilmember Henry. A second, second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right.
7.6, the tanker truck. Callie, you want to come up? That'd be great. Always, always here for support.
Lift the microphone.
I suppose you understand my concerns from our conversation we had this afternoon. Just, we're upgrading from a vehicle that's 40 years old to a vehicle that's 34 years old. After, I talked with Paulie, of course, regarding his inspection of the vehicle. He said he went over it with a fine-tooth comb and he picked it apart. He said the, the maintenance on it is unbelievable. They keep it in mint shape. It's, he said it's almost showroom quality. But I'm still concerned just about, you know, what's under the hood? How long is, what type of duration are we gonna get out of it? We're gonna get 15, 20 years out of it? That's my question.
Corey is more of an expert on this than I am, so I'm gonna refer to him.
So I do run a trucking business as my full-time job. And I initially went and looked at it along with Callie and the other assistant chief. And I thought it was very clean. I've looked at quite a few other trucks. I spent probably the last year, well, since I became assistant chief, the last 12 months looking at trucks. And it's very hard to find decent trucks with the price that we have to work with. And this is by far the cleanest truck that I've found out there. I also looked at a Green Isle truck and there was one other one I looked at and they're in a lot worse shape. For internal components, I can't tell you. I mean, it starts, it runs, it drives. It doesn't seem like it's been abused, doesn't leak oil. But I can't, you know, I can't tell you that it's gonna run for a million miles.
No, 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 I get that.
But body-wise, functionality-wise, it's one of the cleanest trucks out on the market right now. And Waconia is known for taking care of their, their fire trucks really well. And, I mean, I was underneath it, Paul was underneath it. The crossmembers, all that stuff is really good. It's really clean. Other trucks I've looked at, you could stick your finger through holes in the crossmembers and it's, this is by far the best thing that is out there right now.
Upgrades for safety? Are there any? What's that?
As far as?
Well, technology's come a long way since 1989. As far as brakes, seat harnesses and stuff like that. Is there a possibility to make the adjustments and the alterations to upgrade to keep it modernized?
So Paul did suggest that we put automatic slack adjusters on, which that controls your brakes, so right now they're manual. So every, every often, somebody needs to go underneath and adjust the brakes. So he suggested that we put automatic slack adjusters on, which is standard nowadays. I believe in '94, you had to have them on, on the truck and trailer. So that's not a big price item to do. So that, and then the other thing, seat belts, there are just lap belts in there, but we are try, I've been doing a little research. I know that they do make seats that do have integrated shoulder and lap belts built into the seat. I haven't found them yet, but I've been working on it. So hoping we can find something that'll work for that truck.
Well, that answers my questions. Anybody else have questions?
Yeah, if we're gonna look at replacing the seats, what is, what do you think the cost of that's gonna be?
I haven't been able to get a price on it yet. If I had to guess, maybe $2,000 for the pair.
Okay. Right, any other questions on 7.6?
Then I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a tanker truck for $25,000 from the city of Waconia.
A motion by Councilmember Henry. All second. Second by Councilmember Mack. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, business items, 8.1, the liquor license application for 205 Broadway. Mr. Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, yep.
Great. So tonight, we are back talking about Ms. Marish's liquor license. We talked about it at the last meeting, I know. And we do have a resolution for the council just with the direction we were provided after the discussion at the December 5th meeting, approving the liquor license application. So it's an on-sale and off-sale combination license with Sunday sales for the establishment located at 205 North Broadway. Of course, I don't want to summarize everything that unfolded at the last meeting. But just to be brief, the council, of course, had an opportunity to talk to Ms. Marish about her background investigation and her ability to be a responsible liquor licensee in the city of Carver and determined that she was indeed fit for, for that responsibility. And so this resolution normally would have just come back on the consent agenda, but there are two council members I know that recuse themselves from the discussion due to conflicts of interest. And so staff is recommending approval of resolution 164-22, which does conditionally approve that liquor license. The only conditions are that we just get all of the paperwork for Ms. Marish that is required to process the license, including her insurance, proof of financial responsibility, and her state and federal tax identification numbers for her LLC, which it's my understanding, and this is not out of the ordinary, do take some time to get after you form a new business. And then the other condition is that we get a written confirmation from the current owner that the license is, the transfer of the license is indeed requested. And we have confirmed in writing from the current licensee of that establishment that the two are working to finalize a purchase of the establishment. The tentative date is February 1st at this point. We will have staff confirm the exact date before the paperwork gets sent into the state to be processed. And so again, the recommendation from staff is approval of the resolution tonight. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Right. You guys are recusing again?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson will be recusing. All right, any questions? No.
I had a question, but you answered it, Mr. Anderson, on what examples of conditional were. So it's my understanding it's more just the paperwork and just kind of transferring the license.
Yes, just dotting the Ts and crossing the Is really, it's just a matter of making sure we have everything we need to finalize that.
All right, with that, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 164-22, a resolution conditionally approving a liquor license transfer for the establishment located at 205 North Broadway.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by Councilmember Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Okay, 8.2, the CASA 40 turnback agreement with Carver County. Mr. Long.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I will be seeking action to execute an agreement on County Road 40 turnback that we've talked a great deal about over the past year. I'm just gonna hit the highlights on this because I think every one of you are quite familiar with it. So there's probably just a few big-picture elements that you want to ask about. So. So just going back for the benefit of the record here, this goes back many years. That's some, more or less, good faith agreements between the city and the county that when the city of Carver became an MSA city, there'd be some turnback proceedings that would occur between the county and the city to hand back the road over to the city. There's some mutual benefits then, and there's mutual benefits agreed upon now, which is why we're here, that ultimately this road is of higher value to the city than it is to the county. And so that's, that's why we've been continuing to pursue it. It wasn't a binding agreement in the past. It was a good faith agreement that we've still concluded is, is worth proceeding with. So really, what it came down to is the good faith agreement needed to become an agreement in, in detail here. We needed to come up with the exact terms. And we've been working on that quite, quite feverishly over the past six months, especially the last two or three, there's been a lot of details. It gets down to the numbers, to the $50,000 increment. And we've worked through a lot of, a lot of theories on what, what would be fair. We've come up with what we, we believe is, is a fair agreement in which the county is offering cash for what they would have put into the roadway in the near future, and that, that would be subject to this agreement here. It's the amount of $1,138,000 Carver County would pay the city of Carver for, in lieu of maintenance that they would have performed. So there was a lot that went into that. It was, it had to do with the reclamation on the eastern portion of the road. And then it had a seal coat on the western portion and some other, other risk built into it and uncertainty to scope and things of that nature that, that came, that came into that number. So we, you know, obviously had to go back and forth quite a bit on that, but we, we ended with what we thought was, was a fair, fair place to be for, for the city, of course. And that is what would be the final piece to the puzzle here. So what you have in front of you tonight is the agreement that has that cash-in-lieu-of term in it. And there's some other elements of the agreement that you might want to ask us on. But the nutshell is, is when this agreement gets executed by the city, it would go to the county. The county would bring that forward to the board, expected to be approved, you know, in January, I suppose. And then at that point, there's some final process steps. But it ends with, when the county writes the check to the city, the agreement is fulfilled, and the city has the road. At that point, we'd put it on your MSA system. We're hoping to get that done by March of this year, in which case that would allow you to collect funds on it in 2024. It'd be the beginning of 2024. So the key elements of it really come down to the dollars. And that's, that's it. I think we've talked a lot about that. The benefits of the turnback are you gain control over the roadway. It becomes a local road, and that's very different than a county road. So there's different liberties you can take with a local road than the county might, might take on, on what they look at as a, really a, a transportation route. And they're not looking at the aesthetics of it. They're not looking at the, perhaps in some cases, the walkability of it. They're, they're really looking at it as, here's a, here's a county road that needs to carry traffic through the city. For the city, this is a downtown corridor. And so that's the advantages to the city. The other advantage that is of significance is when this does become a part of the city system, it's eligible for the city to apply for funds outside of what you'd receive from the county. So once it's on your system, you can apply for grant funding that you could not have on behalf of the county, for example. One, one grant in particular is one you're familiar with from Sixth Street, the local road improvement grant. That would be a program that would now fit into this, into this bucket as a city road. So there's a few things that are, are some positives associated with it. But you are taking, taking the road over, and you are going to assume all maintenance responsibilities of it and ultimately the rehab and, and repair responsibilities, which that's what the $1.1 million is for. So the, the agreement states that the county would maintain it through this winter because in the middle of the winter, it's not ideal to shift plowing personnel from the city, or of county to city. So they, they're agreeing to take it throughout, throughout the winter till spring. At that point, the city forces would begin to maintain the road. And if there's any other questions here, I'd be happy to answer them. But I think we've talked through the terms quite a few times, and I'm just going to open it up to you for any questions. And we're going to recommend approval and recommend execution of the agreement.
All right. Questions?
I have a question about the agreement, because I think you have gone through all the terms. But I guess regarding the maintenance, the seal coating and the reclamation, when do you think that we, as a city, are going to have a discussion about planning for spending that money?
I would, I would say the discussion's really, it can happen immediately. I, I think the, the theory here is, is we've collected enough that if you wanted to do the project as, as they scoped it, you would, you would do that for at least that amount of money or less.
Yep.
Is, is the methodology here. That being said, I think the bigger question is, is would you want to re-scope that, that effort? And perhaps do some of the maintenance and put it towards, you know, other improvements that are higher priority for you. So those agreements can happen, or those discussions can happen as, as soon as that road becomes city. And that would be very soon, if this goes through.
My only thoughts were about costs, right? Because costs keep going up, right? So the longer we delay, right, the less that $1 million is worth. The other piece is that we're talking reclamation and seal coating, which I know we want to keep on top of, right? We've learned that through our pavement management plan. So those would be my only concerns. But I know there are other things the city has looked at, this road and things that we want to do. So I know we want to have a more holistic view, so.
Sure. And I'll, and I'll just note on the reclamation, keep in mind, that's, that's one of the elements in which waiting doesn't hurt you.
That's true.
If you already are planning on rehabbing all the pavement, the only issue is what condition you're comfortable letting it get to. And so the thinking here is that perhaps we could get away with some lower-cost maintenance for a while there, if you're willing to tolerate the, the ride and reallocate that money and come up with different funding methodologies for other improvements. So there's, there's a different line of thinking that can happen here with you owning, owning the road.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
When we're talking about the annexation of easements, so is this, it says in addition, the city and the county will work together through the annexation process. So is this basically just a paperwork-based thing? Or are we going to have to acquire additional easements when we take this over?
No, it's a good question. I, I didn't really cover that. It's, it's a paperwork exercise, to be completely honest with you. It's, it's on the very western end, the city limits, the stratos, the middle of the road. And so it's a formal, you can't bring in a road unless it's complete within the city boundaries. And so really, in order for that segment to come in, we have to go through an annexation process to bring that half of the road into the city limits in order for it to be fully exercised. The county doesn't want to stop it short. And so it is completely a paperwork exercise because by rule, it has to be within the city limits. And that really is all there is to it. We have to annex it in order to formalize that segment of road.
Okay. And then that's just including the road and the easement? That doesn't have anything to do with a couple of properties that are on the end there, right?
Aaron, the limits of that annexation, you want to answer that one?
Yeah, the, the county has stated that, that the right-of-way isn't fee already. So it's just, it's county-owned right-of-way that we just have to go through the process of getting it transferred, you know, annexed into the city and then transferred to the city, so.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Glenn?
The culvert, or the, the culvert at the east side, is that in Chaska City property?
The Chaska culvert, yep.
That answers my question.
It is, it is Chaska, and it has been a topic multiple times. And yes, they own the repair on that one by jurisdiction.
Okay. That's all I had.
Sorry, I skipped over. No, no questions. Okay. So let's see. My questions, are there any, so for this $1.1 million, are there any restrictions on that money? Does it have to go for road stuff? Can it be put into a different fund? Are there any strings attached to that money?
There's, there's one question I was thinking about on the way here. I'm not positive if you can take turnback funds for 40 and allocate it towards other roads. That, that is something that I'd have to dig into. But as far as, as far as use on the corridor, it's pretty, it's pretty open discretion as far as a public, public purpose and public transportation.
Okay, but it has to be roads and transportation. We can't use it to plug holes in the budget or buy a fire truck.
Yeah, I, I don't believe that. I'm, I'm quite certain that there's going to be some attachments to turnback funds. However, that being said, I could probably follow up with you and get you more details on the strings attached with that money.
Okay, super. I appreciate that.
Does, does it know?
Thank you. What was that?
Does our city attorney know if that would be something that we can, he could answer that or not?
For, for the annexation fees?
No, for the, are there any strings attached to the, the money from the turnback fees? Can we use that to plug holes in the budget, buy a fire truck? Any, can we use that for non-road uses?
No, that's a good question. I think, I think it's probably unlikely, although I haven't looked at, at that issue specifically yet. It's unlikely that there are strings attached. I think what the intent of the payment really is, is here's money that the county expected or anticipated spending on this roadway had they not turned it back. Because they're turning it back, they're willing and able to give it to the city. And so there's probably some flexibility there now. I don't want to say that's for certain. I can, I can confirm that with staff. But that's what my gut tells me. And we can have further discussion about that if there's a desire to use that money for other, other things.
Okay. I don't have a use in mind. It's just a curious question, so.
Yeah, it's, it's applicable, and I was thinking about it, and I, I knew I didn't have that full answer, but we can get it for you.
I always like something, you guys, so.
Yeah, you still, yeah, you got me.
Talk that up as a win.
Well, we'll find out what the limits of it are.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then I think my only other question, Chad, is for you. I can't imagine that this is going to be a super-heavy lift in terms of like staff and maintenance and that kind of thing. But do we have the staff and do we have the equipment to take care of this?
Since we've been talking about it for almost a year, we were already planning it into, you know, maintenance this year yet. So the fact that we, you know, don't have to do any maintenance on it until, there's snow removal or any maintenance until summertime, that's helped out. But I do believe we have the, the staff and equipment for it.
Okay, super. Thank you. All right. Unless anybody else has any questions?
No. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 159-22, authorizing execution of a turnback acceptance agreement with the county of Carver for county-state aid Highway 40.
All right, we've got a motion by council member Sarah.
I'll second.
A second by council member McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Thanks, Sam. On to item 8.3, the 2023 property tax levy and budget.
Thank you, mayor and council. Good evening. And we have reached the end of this marathon that we've been running since May. And I have spared you my presentation because I know you guys have it memorized. But it's been a really fun year to work on this budget process and the levy. And I've learned so much about the city of Carver while doing it so. And I've gotten to work with some really great, brilliant people, too. So I'm really excited to be here tonight to present the property tax levy and the 2023 budget. As I said, we started in May, and we worked on it all summer and fall. And as we gained information, we massaged that budget, and this is what we have today. So two weeks ago, we presented the truth in taxation, and we offered residents to come in and provide their feedback. And that was kind of the last, final presentation of the budget. And so tonight, our budget is finalized at $3,357, or $57,039. Let's just say 3.3 million. I'm just like so excited to have this done. As far as our levy goes, we are still at a 6.9% increase. And that's where we were with the preliminary when we set it back in September. So the general levy is at 2.2 million. The debt levy is actually decreasing from last year. And our street maintenance levy is increasing by 100,000. So that gives us a $3.8 million total levy. And that's only a 6.9% increase from last year. The primary drivers consist of $130,000 increase in capital improvements, and that consists of $100,000 in public service equipment. We have a tractor with plow and blower, and then a Kubota mower. And then we are also making another investment in our accounting software, which will begin implementation in March, excitingly. I mentioned the $100,000 additional investment in the street maintenance funding. And then there's a $50,000 increase in law enforcement contract, as well as we have more investment in our staff and benefits. So tonight, I'm bringing forward the final budget and levy for 2023. There is two resolutions on, in front of you. So the first is certifying the 2023 property tax levy in the amount of, I'm just going to say 3.8 million. And then a motion to adopt resolution 163-22, approving the 2023 budget. That resolution lists out the general fund, and the debt fund, water fund, and all of the other major funds at the city of Carver. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But thank you for your patience with me as I worked through this this year.
Well, thank you for your work, Lynn. And I think we say this every time we talk about the budget, but by this time that we're doing the budget, it's okay with us that Lynn didn't go through the presentation? Because we don't have enough fingers on one hand to count the number of times that we've already seen the presentation. So if that's, anybody else have any questions? Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolutions 162-22, certifying the 2023 property tax levy in the amount of $3,851,980.
Got a motion by council member McKnight.
Second.
And a second by council member Henry. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 163-22, approving the 2023 budget.
All right, we've got a motion by council member Sarah.
I'll second.
A second by council member McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Thank you. Appreciate all your work on that.
Yes, thank you.
Number nine, communications. Mr. Merrick?
Just a few things. On Friday, the team held the orientation program for council member-elect Eric Perschmann. And aside from this kind of the training that was, and education that we offered, sent a note to the team after, just, you don't often kind of get to see the whole city from A to Z in one day. And we're just really proud and honored to be a part of the team that we have here. The amount of services and knowledge that every one of the folks on our team has is truly remarkable. So it's, it was just kind of inspiring to see them at their best, working on all the things that they work on every day. And then I just also wanted to say publicly on behalf of the team, thank you to Glenn. Everything that everyone said, but, you know, the thing that I think stands out for Glenn, as with everybody, but Glenn, you know, does it with some pizzazz is, he just always asks you how you're doing and how your family's doing, and is a ferocious advocate for everybody on the team. And if someone's getting after somebody, if he had the authority, he'd go out there and fight, fight that person on our behalf. So we have to hold them back. My favorite Glenn story is, back when I, close to when I first started, they were, there was a company that was taking out the old trestle, the old main trestle. And there's a big log jam. And we were trying to figure out a way to get that kind of unjammed. And Glenn volunteered that he had a chainsaw and would be happy to go down there and try to get that unstuck. And so thankfully, Glenn didn't try to do that. He's still here to tell that story. No, we did not like that other story, too, about matches, so.
Didn't it end up being lit on fire somehow, somewhere?
We should just stop talking about it. So anyway, thank, thank you, Glenn, and look forward to working with you as a community member going forward.
Thank you, Brett.
All right. Joy? I don't have any updates. I just wanted to make a comment about the monthly financial report. I know we've talked in the past how we want to educate our residents about water usage. And I thought the pie charts about the November versus October water usage were very interesting, right? That you went from in October where we had 40% of residents at the tier-three rate, which is the highest consumption rate. But that totally flipped in November, and it was only 4% in that highest tier. So I think this data that we're collecting and that we're putting together, I think is going to be really helpful to help residents understand water usage. And I mean, this is, this is why we just finished another water treatment plant expansion. So anyway, so thank you. Good data coming. I love it.
All right. I don't have any updates. I just want to say again to Glenn, I'm going to miss you.
Thank you.
You've had a lot of contributions. I've enjoyed working with you.
Thanks.
Kristi?
HPC was canceled this month, so we didn't have that. For the Lions Club, the Soggy Bottom fundraiser we do, the snow golf tournament, is scheduled for January 28. That's a Saturday down at Riverside Park. It's from 11:00 AM to 2:00. We did select our two recipients, and we need to get just a little bit more information back from them. And it will be out in the January newsletter, and then the online donations and signing up for the attorney will start shortly.
All right. Glenn, I'm going to let you go last this time. I just have a couple of quick updates. On December 8, we had to shop with a hero at Fleet Farm, where we had Ross, our night deputy, who was like MVP of the night. And not one, but two little girls individually chose him to go shopping with them, very popular individual. And then Cover Fire participated. And then this year, Fleet Farm also invited Chaska PD. So it was a really good group. And Fleet Farm very generously gave each child $150 to spend on gifts for whomever they wanted, including themselves. So six kids, and it was a really, I always go and help wrap the gifts, and each kid easily had a half a dozen gifts and more when they chose lower dollar items. So thanks to Fleet Farm for pulling that together again this year. December 10 was the holiday market. We partnered with the Southwest Metro Chamber on that, and it was really nice and really well-attended. I came a little bit later in the afternoon and was a little bit worried with the timing and it being the first time, and it was busy. And the Village Hall room was just completely packed, and there were tons of folks coming in and out and buying lots of good stuff. So that was a lot of fun. And then, Chad, I am sorry to put you on the spot here, but I have a question for you. Fully recognizing that it has been, it was 36 degrees outside a week ago, but I am just curious if you can look into your crystal ball and let us know when you're anticipating the ice rink to be open. I know I've seen some activity up there.
Yes, we were actually going to do a training on it tomorrow morning. We did find an electrical problem, which is going to be diagnosed tomorrow morning. So I'll have more to come on that.
Electrical problem? It's water.
We don't want them together.
We have a separate well that we don't use the city's water system to flood the rink.
Okay.
So more to come, but yeah, this week we were planning on making some ice.
We're a couple of weeks out then?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Glenn?
Good night. No.
Wow.
Well, thank you, everybody, for the kind words. It's been a pretty good run. Before I get all melancholy and everything, I want to challenge the city. I want to challenge the county. I want to challenge the DNR, and I want to challenge U.S. Fish and Wildlife. We have an abundance of coyotes and box running through town. And I don't know if anybody else heard about it, but they are everywhere. And was it two years ago when the DNR and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife shut off hunting down in the river bottoms for shotgun slugs for deer?